Okay, it looks like we have all of the players for today's game. All right, well, we'll start the hearing formally now. My name is Bill Henry. I am the councilman for the 4th district and chair of the Equity and Structure Committee. We're joined today by Webex with Councilman Christopher Burnett of the 8th District, vice-chair of the committee, Councilwoman Danielle McCray of the 2nd District, member of the committee, Councilman Ryan Dorsey of the 3rd District, sponsor of one of the charter amendments that we'll be hearing. We are also joined on this call by, I'm gonna see if I can just do a round robin here, Sam Johnson from Council Services, Elena DePietro and Vic DiVala from the Law Department, Kalen Young and Dominic McIlly from the President's Office, Avery Eisenstark and Tony DiFranco from Legislative Reference, and Daniel and Mara from Finance, and of course, Matt Segman representing the Mayor's Office. I don't think I missed anybody, so we're gonna get started now. We're gonna start with two charter amendments that we're gonna technically hear simultaneously. Charter Amendment 20-0492, Charter Amendment City Council Reduction in Size, and Bill 20-0504 Charter Amendment City Council Composition. The first one was introduced earlier this year by the Chair. The second one was introduced two weeks later by Councilman Dorsey. I'll give a quick synopsis of mine, and then I'll turn it over to Councilman Dorsey to do a quick synopsis of his. The charter amendment that I introduced is for the purpose of reducing the size of the city council. It would reduce the total size of the council from 15 to 9. There would continue to be six single-member districts with representatives on the council, and then there would be three at-large members. The council itself would elect its council president, its council vice-president, and its planning commission rep every year from among the three at-large members. And now I'll turn it over to Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Councilman Henry. My bill would retain the size of the city council at its current size of 15 members, albeit by eliminating the office of the council president as an at-large position, creating a need for redistricting, which will have to happen anyway after the census, to create 15 single-member districts. And that upon election, as 15 single members, the members of the city council would elect from among themselves a council president to be the presiding officer of the city council while also continuing to represent their individual district. There are other nuances to what is in this proposal, including that the council president would be elected for only two years out of the four-year term, and then midterm, the council would choose another council president to serve for the remainder of the term for another two years. And that the same person could not serve two consecutive two-year terms. So we would continuously overturn leadership among the council as to further dispel the, or dissolve the concentration of power that currently comes with being council president, and how wide that gap of power and authority is that exists presently between the council president and the members of the city council. The main proposal here would make us much more in line with most other legislative bodies, like the Maryland General Assembly, both in the House and in the Senate, other jurisdictions like Montgomery County, Baltimore County, New York City, all of whom elect leadership from among their district-elected members. I also have an amendment for consideration for a somewhat very different proposal that in a way is kind of halfway between my bill proposal and Councilman Henry's proposal, in that it would shrink the number of district representatives to 10, meaning that members would have slightly larger districts than presently, but go from having one at-large elected member to the council to five at-large members to the council. This would bring us in line with numerous other jurisdictions, including our neighbors in Washington DC and in Philadelphia, having a certain number of district representatives, and also a number of at-large representatives, not just one. It would also bring us in line with Philadelphia and Washington DC in that my proposal is also that the number of people representing or affiliated with any one political party would be limited. That is to say that with five, that my proposal is that with five at-large members, no more than three could be of any single political party. And I'm happy to talk about why I think that is important at a later time, but I think I've given a general framework here for what I'm proposing. Thank you, Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Councilman. At this point, we would like to get agency reports from Law and Finance. Let's start with the Law Department.
Mr. Chairman, this is Vic Turbola from the Law Department. The Law Department has no problem with the bills as drafted, either both bills, 492 or 504.
Okay, thank you very much. We've been joined by Council President Scott. Thank you, Mr. President. We are going to be hearing a charter amendment in which the council president is the lead sponsor later in the hearing. Now, the Finance report for these two charter amendments, Daniel?
Hi, Mr. Chair, thank you. We, uh, we think that both of these bills can be done in a budget-neutral fashion, so there would not be a large fiscal impact for either, for either bill. I think generally, our perspective has been that with two competing bills like this, and with a lot of the charter amendments, is that we would prefer for it to defer to the Charter Commission, which is another charter amendment that is coming up. We think that this could be a little bit more deliberative, and make sure that is syncing correctly with the current charter. And we all have a similar perspective for the, for the city administrative bill. But both, both bills wouldn't have a very minimal fiscal impact.
Okay, thank you. Do, do any members of the committee have any questions about these charter amendments for either Councilman Dorsey or myself, or for Law or Finance? Okay, so seeing, seeing that neither Councilman Burnett nor Councilwoman McCray are unmuting themselves to ask questions, I'm gonna assume that there are none. If, am I correct in interpreting the information before us that we have, do we have any members of the public on this call that I should be checking to see if they're, ah, here we go. Okay, so I'm seeing Aaron Moore, Ashel Henry, call-in user Feviola Donato Galindo, Joe Del Balsso, Scott Davis, Sumner Weiss, and Thira Lowe. I'm looking to see if any of these members, any of these attendees would like to provide public testimony. So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna go through the call-in users one at a time. If you're, if you're calling into this, then when you hear two beeps, you have been unmuted, and that's an opportunity for you to either say you have no comment or to introduce yourself and provide testimony.
No comment.
Well, yeah, and they said no comment. Okay, it looks like there is no public testimony.
Mr. Chair, if I may, this is Kalen Young.
Yes, sir, Mr. Young, please go ahead.
Mr. Chair, we would need you to give instruction that those individuals can raise their hand using the Raise Hand function in the bottom right corner of the participants list. So you...
Right, I, 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 okay, so I will, I will formally repeat what Mr. Young has just stated, which is that if you are in, if you're, if you're a participant in this call and you would like to, like to provide any type of testimony, please select the Raise Hand icon, and we will call on you. But seeing none, I would...
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Dorsey.
I did see an exclamation here in this attendee list next to Thira and to Scott Davis. Oh, Thira just took hers away, but Scott Davis's is still there, and he just put it there a minute ago, so perhaps he has something to say.
Mr. Chair, if I may, one more time.
Certainly, Kalen.
The exclamation point actually denotes attentiveness. It would not denote whether an individual wanted to speak, just for clarity.
Yeah, the, the exclamation point is, is the system telling us whether or not people are paying attention to the call that they're officially participants in. So, again, if, if, with no other testimony or questions, I would ask the members of the committee, is there any discussion on either of these charter amendments?
Councilman Burnett. Okay, um, so I guess, just for the, I don't believe we've held hearings publicly on this one before. Could, would you guys be just be willing, I guess, to speak, I guess, to the intent or sort of the problem trying to be solved with both proposals? Just speak to that a little bit, just so folks have it, you know, have a deeper understanding of what, what's the motivation for these two?
Sure. Councilman Dorsey, would you like to begin?
I would follow you if I might.
Fair, fair enough. So the, for, for me, the impetus behind this charter amendment is, this amendment was originally part of a package of four charter amendments that I introduced in the last term. The cumulative point of which was to try to equalize the power differential between the legislative branch and the executive branch. One of the other charter amendments in that package was also reintroduced and has already moved through the committee and legislative process. That was reducing the number of votes needed to overturn a mayoral veto. Another charter amendment from that original package has been reintroduced, which is the ability to have the council add money in the budget instead of just being able to cut it. But this one was specifically about addressing some of the more, I guess you could call them psychological issues in the, the power dynamic between the mayor and the council. One of the issues that I saw when the council was 19 members, and that I still see with the, I see to some extent more of, with the council being 14 single members and just the one at-large council president, is that it is now relatively easy for a mayor to marginalize an individual councilperson. A, if, if an individual councilperson is, is a thorn in the side of the administration, the administration is in a position to make life hard for that councilperson in their district while only making less than seven, wait, I guess, just, just over 7% of the city's population unhappy of the mayor. Comparatively, if we had a nine-member council with six single-member districts and three at-large members, it is much harder for the mayor to marginalize any of the councilmembers. Each councilperson would represent almost 17% of the city, and it would be more difficult for the mayor to punish a councilperson in that type of fashion by decreasing their access to constituent work. Because no mayor is gonna wanna make that many voters for themselves unhappy. Similarly, with three at-large councilmembers instead of just the one council president, we would be in a stroke doubling the bench, as it were, of citywide elected officials who are dealing with the same issues that would make them credible candidates for mayor. But with the, with the advantage of already having a citywide base. Right now, and I'm gonna struggle to say this with a straight face, right now, it's challenging to go from being someone who represents 1/14 of the city to running for a citywide office. It used to be easier when councilpeople came into that job already representing a sixth of the city. And I would note that the number of councilpeople who have made the transition from representing 1/14 of the city to representing the entire city has risen technically zero since we moved to 14 single-member districts. Every councilperson who has ascended to higher office has done so through filling in a vacancy of, of an office, of a citywide office. So I think that this has, this would have benefits for, for the people who are generally speaking closer to the council than they are to the mayor in terms of there's more of them, and it's easier for people to connect to them. And so that's why I, I suggested this, this amendment. Councilman Dorsey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Speaking as one who has experienced being punished by a mayor, I am quite sensitive to the point and appreciative of it. My proposals, for my part, I think strike even more closely at the potential to be marginalized as a council member by the council president. That the council president wields under its, our current structure a significant, significantly greater level of power than any of the members of the council to whom the, the council president has absolutely no statutory allegiance. The council president is not a representative of the city council in the way that the Speaker of the House is a representative of the Maryland House of Delegates, or the Senate president is a representative of the Maryland Senate. And the same can be said at the federal level. And the same can be said for the, the presiding officers of the Baltimore County Council and Montgomery County Council. And the, as I use as an example, the city council of New York City and many, many, many other places. Baltimore City is almost entirely unique in its makeup where we have only one at-large elected council president, at-large elected member. And while I think that a lot of people in the general public may be of the opinion that it is more democratic for the public to directly elect that presiding officer over the council and give them all of the power that comes with it. It's not merely, you know, a, the administrative kind of function of, of being the presiding officer, but there is a lot of power that comes with it. That, that while many may think it's more democratic to have their vote directly electing that person, the degree to which, to which that person then has the ability to, to disrupt the will of many others elected by district gives me question, questions as to whether it is, it would not be more truly democratic to have the body elect its own presiding officer. This then has not just the ability, the impact on how bills are handled once introduced, but who and how committees are structured and made up in the first place, which again, as a, as a power of the, of the Chair of the Body, is a significant factor in how other bodies elect their, their Chair. I, I wanna talk about my amended, amendment proposal also. It is essentially a completely alternate proposal here. We are, you know, if we're gonna talk about this amendment, which I'd like to, we are effectively talking about three different, entirely separate proposals for how the council could be structured differently. And, and I think that the fact that we have so many different proposals that can be discussed just speaks to the degree to which the current structure should rightly be drawn into question and the shortcomings for it. The, this alternate proposal of having 10 members, to a degree, of having 10 districts, to a degree addresses some of what Council, Councilman Henry's concerns is, and what many people have as a concern related to the kind of fiefdom of having very, very small districts, and, and the problems that that often presents. But having five elected, at-large elected positions means that there are more people on the council who have a clear sense of responsibility and purpose to putting forth citywide policy proposals, as well as weighing in on, on, you know, localized issues like land use and development issues with a more keen eye to how each little land use development and proposal and change, as well as transportation investments. Each one of them is a small part of what amounts to a citywide kind of outlook of often disparity, where one district gets treated a certain way by a certain person, and another district may get treated a different way by a different person. And over time, these amount to sharp, sharp contrasts between these districts and a disparity of access and opportunity that may exist from one part of the city to another, as well as a different cost of living and the amenities that follow those kind of investments and proposals in one district versus another. And it can go both ways. I want those things in my district, or no, keep those things out of my district. And particularly the latter are the kind of things that, that I, you know, I'm very, I'm very often concerned with, keeping things away from certain districts. Having more at-large members helps us to reinforce the idea that we have to have a global perspective about what's good for our city. Along with this proposal, the idea of limiting the number of people representative or affiliated with a single political party, like Philadelphia and Washington DC do, for me, strikes at kind of the, the heart of minority representation, that we're bringing a more diverse bunch of voices to the table. And, and in doing so, we are able to reflect a different, a different range of ideologies, and also, in a way, kind of draw a line in the sand. Baltimore City, there are a lot of people that have said for years, rightly or not, and I tend to think not, that Baltimore's problems are due to the fact that we have only elected Democrats for the last seven decades or something. I tend to think that that's a very surface-level kind of statement. I don't think that that really holds water. But, but there is something to be said for, for kind of the distortion of what it means to be a Democrat if everybody just says, "I'm a Democrat." And certain people may not be inclined to vote a certain way, even though that may be the way you might expect a Democrat to vote or carry themselves, or have, you know, ideologically present themselves. And, and I think that it's important for kind of the health and honesty within our city politics to, to have more than one party represented so that we have a better understanding, you know, potentially of what it really means to be affiliated with a single party, you know, with any given party.
Councilman, I believe the President had a question?
No, actually, Mr. Chair, I'll wait till you finish, I have a comment. But yes, it's a, just, it's actually kind of comments and questions for both of you, so please let him finish.
Okay, thank you.
I think I was wrapping it up there, so, um... So I feel like I could go on at some length about this, but I don't really, I think I've said, you know, kind of a bit. And my guess is that Councilman Burnett probably has some other follow-up questions that would help me be more pointed and, you know, kind of iterating what I want to say.
Mr. President, your comment?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to the committee and thank you all. Mr. Chair, you know, you and I have spoken about this quite a bit over the last, geez, almost 10 years now about the council and changing how the council is constituted. As you know, during the last, my first term, the last term, before Councilman Dorsey, Councilman Burnett, Councilman McCray joined us, there was a bill to reduce the council. And as you know, at the time, I had proposed to the sponsor of the bill at that time, Councilwoman Specter, that her bill be changed a little. And going, she wanted to have, I think you had said, four districts. She wanted multi-member, four districts, four times two, and it's eight. And then I said that, you know, my addition to that, or whether it was that or even having five districts times two, would be to have us join other cities, to not have just one citywide elected official. As you know, I proposed then and said to you that we should continue, and I think that the citizens would probably think that we should continue to elect the president citywide. But to give that more balance, I proposed back then and going to uplift to the conversation again now, having the Vice President and the Rep to the Planning Commission also be elected citywide. Just wanted to, again, point that, put that back out there as the conversation. I know this conversation is not going to be wrapped up today, but I think it's important for us to have that in this conversation as well. That is all for me on this.
Mr. President, Councilman Dorsey, did you have a reaction to that? Or should we go to see if Councilman Burnett or Councilwoman McCray have any additional questions?
I think that this is a pretty, I think I alluded to this kind of sense of, people's sense of the democracy of direct representation versus republic representation through representation, where we don't necessarily all as individual citizens vote on every issue. This is, you know, the council president clearly delineates a kind of a difference in perspective here. You know, electing the council president, Vice President, and Planning Commission Rep all citywide, whereas my proposal is that all three of those positions would be elected by the members of the council from among the members of the council. And this is similar to, I guess, the issue, you know, at the state level. Often we have these conversations. We're also in the midst of conversations about the restructuring of the Board of Estimates. You know, similarly, at the state level, if we were to compare, say, changing the city's Board of Estimates to three members, so that it would be more like the three-member Board of Public Works at the state, we would have to take into account that at the state, you have the governor, the comptroller, and the state treasurer, who is a person who is chosen by the legislature. That person is a representative of the legislature. And I think that that speaks to the importance of the deliberative nature of a body and having a, you know, and the dialectic, the dialogue that happens within an elective body like that and how important that is to having a really well-debated outcome that is represented by a person that's representative of that body. So, and similarly, I think that that's important in having a representative of the city council as the leader of the city council and as the secondary kind of stand-in leader through the council Vice President and on the Planning Commission. I would note that actually presently, the Vice President and the Planning Commission Rep are elected by the city council, elected by the city council. But that elective process is significantly, I would say entirely undermined by the unilateral power that the council president presently holds. If the council president didn't have so significantly greater a power than the members of the city council, if the council president were actually a representative of the city council, it would cease to undermine the present circumstance of the council president effectively dictating who the council Vice President and Planning Commission reps are.
Actually, Councilman, if I could jump in for a second, I feel obliged to point out that almost all of the powers that we commonly think of as the powers of the city council president are really granted to the president in the rules of the council as opposed to come intrinsically with the office through the charter. The ability to determine committee chairs and committee membership, to assign bills to committees, to distribute, actually, I think even the ability to distribute office space within City Hall, these are all in the rules of the council as opposed to our charter provisions. So in theory, the council could, at the beginning of a term, adopt rules in which the president had fewer of those powers. But what I would say, and where I agree with you, the power that is in the charter and is not one that is up to the rest of the council to ratify or grant, is the president's concurrent leadership of the Board of Estimates and seat on that body, as well as the president being in the position to automatically ascend to the mayoralty in case of a vacancy in that office. And that is, and those two powers are not ones that the council itself can do anything about. And for me, that is the driving force in why that I see that role as it being important, that it be representative of the council, that the person who sits on the Board of Estimates and is commonly discussed as being on the Board of Estimates representing the council technically does not, because they, except in the current situation and the occasional similar one, generally, the council president is not elected or selected by the other council members. That I see as the common ground of these two charter amendments. They both agree that it would be better if the council were to select its own leadership. Whether that leadership must come from someone who was elected at large or not, that to me is a far more debatable matter. If, from my perspective, the rationale in my charter amendment for requiring that the council president be one of the three at-large members was that if we were going to continue to have the council president automatically ascend to the mayoralty, this way it ensured that the person who did that actually has a citywide mandate. And if we were to open up the presidency of the city council to any member at large or district, then I would say that significantly reduces the moral justification of that person ascending to the mayoralty in case of a vacancy. But what I'd like to hear now is some thought on this matter from either Councilman Burnett or Councilwoman McCray. Do you have any questions for us or suggestions on how we can move this discussion along?
Mr. Chair, I have zero questions for either bill. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Burnett?
I don't have any further questions. I just, you know, look forward to figuring out a way to find a middle ground on this between both proposals. So, but I don't have anything else right now.
Okay, thank you. Well, and that actually is where I was thinking of suggesting that we move forward is, I think we should, oh, just a second. Quick, quick recess. Sorry, just clearing up a little paperwork. What I would like to ask of Councilman Dorsey is maybe we should put our heads together, virtually speaking, and look at where there are additional opportunities to find common ground. I want you to know that while everyone else can just see your forehead growing larger, what I'm seeing up here is, yes. What I'm thinking is we could talk a little bit, maybe, about where our two proposals don't have common ground. I see some value in reducing the overall size of the council. Both your charter amendment and the amendments to it that are effectively a second proposal keep the same overall size. So I think it would be worth us having a conversation on whether there is a middle ground where we're still maintaining the benefits of a larger council, but trying to accrue some of the benefits of a smaller one. And then the last part of that, I think we should figure out how to incorporate. And this is where I would appreciate some guidance from Councilwoman McCray and Councilman Burnett, not necessarily right at this moment. But there is a very basic question of whether we should continue to promote the single-member district concept that we moved to back in 2002, or if, for several reasons that have been pointed out since then, we should consider returning to some form of multi-member district as Councilman Scott pointed out. I think that it would be helpful to get a sense of whether there is support for that among the council, such that we should be working that into this conversation, or if we should just be focusing on the overall size and the balance of single-member district versus at-large members.
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Dorsey?
If I could, just to go back and respond to some of your comments from a few minutes ago, just one in particular is about the distinction of the powers of the council president granted by the charter versus the powers that are granted through the rules of the city council. I've spent a, you know, considerable amount of time thinking about this and having conversations about this. And I don't think that I can find, and again, this is something for us to follow up on, I don't think that I can find any practicable way, any practical manner of changing the rules of the city council in a way that imitates the power dynamic that exists in other bodies that elect their leadership, that there is an intrinsic, there is something fundamental about the relationship that exists when that person cannot ascend to that leadership without the people under them having some say in that. And there is inherently some negotiation in, you know, if we make you this person, this is how you will preside over this body.
You can change that in the rules right now, literally with one line, where under the existing, where the council president is granted the power to appoint committee chairs and assign committee memberships, you could add the line, "All such appointments must be ratified by a majority vote of the city council." At which point, either the council president actually has a mandate from the council and will be easily able to get that majority vote, or there are a majority of council members who don't support those actions, in which case they wouldn't be electing that person to be the council president. It could be done through the rules. And again, I'd be happy to have this, you know, a lengthier conversation on that. But there's also, the other ways we could accomplish this are we could hardwire some of these things into the charter. We could hardwire some of the existing powers in the rules into the charter. If that were the part of this that needed to be, if we came up with a solution where the only drawback was, for whatever reason, we didn't want to have the council elect its president, we could put other strictures in the charter that would require the president to have a mandate to use their powers. But the other, there was one other thing that I wanted to ask about, and it has gone right out of my head, so hopefully it'll come back at another time. Did anyone else have any questions or comments on these two, on either of these two charter amendments? I do have some public testimony to share, which is we received correspondence from the Greater Baltimore Committee opposing both City Council 20-0492 and 20-0504. Members of the committee should have received copies of this letter. I'm not going to read either of these at length, but I will note that both of them spend a significant amount of time discussing the fact that the issues that would go into determining whether to change the composition of the council speak to the need for a Charter Review Commission that could discuss all of these in a broader setting. So I encourage the council members to read these position statements. If you did not already receive a copy, please reach out to Sam in Council Services, and he will be happy to send you one. I'm inclined, unless Councilman Dorsey disagrees, to table these, both of these bills, and not try to take any action on them at this time. I think there's plenty of need for additional conversation, and we may make a greater attempt, now that we've had the formal hearing for both of these bills, to do a work session. You know, I was about to say, at a time that would be easier for more people to participate, but I'm not sure what that counts as nowadays in this upside-down world of ours. But I'm not sure what that counts as nowadays in this upside-down world of ours. But we will definitely return these charter amendments to committee and have a a work session on them at a later time, after Councilman Dorsey and I have had a chance to do some additional research for our, our colleagues and see where we should be looking for a compromise between the two proposals. So now, at this point, I'd like to move on to one of the two bills that we tabled from Tuesday. And before I start with the, and this is City Council Bill 19-0381, Removal of Elected Officials. Councilman Burnett, I know that the council president's office had been intending to speak with you about some of their concerns related to the Law Department's report, supplemental report and suggested amendments. Did, did you have a chance to speak to the council president's office? And if so, do you have anything you want to contribute from that conversation?
I actually hadn't had an opportunity to, to talk about the amendments. If you'd like, we can hold it on, on hold again until we have an opportunity to do that.
Let's see, well, I have, we have both the council president and Kalen and Dominic from his office. Is, is that, is that the council president's office position right now that we should hold off on further movement of this bill until you guys get a chance to have that conversation with Councilman Burnett? Mr. President, it's possible, oh, there, Kalen. Oh, nope.
I'll, I'll take the question, yeah. We can wait. We're talking about removal, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so, all right, so we will, we will continue to table 19-0381. And then let's move on now to City Council 19-0441, which is the Charter Review Commission. We have new, a new set of amendments worked out by the Law Department and Legislative Reference that, is there anyone on the committee, Councilman Burnett, Councilwoman McCray? Do you both have copies of the new amendments? They should be described at the top as DLR draft, Roman numeral II, 21 April 20, amendments to Council Bill 19-0441. Casey is sharing them on the screen right now. These address Mr. Tervalas' concerns expressed at Tuesday's hearings, or Tuesday's work session, that the way we had added specificity to the establishment of the commission had made it potentially confusing if anyone wanted to have more than one every 10 years. And so the change to Amendment Number One explicitly adds the concept of interim commissions to make certain that it's explicit that those are allowed. And otherwise, the amendments are the same as the ones that we discussed on Tuesday. So unless anyone has any concerns about these amendments, I would like to ask for a motion to approve the amendments that are up on the screen right now.
Make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Councilman Burnett. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Councilwoman McCray. All in favor of the amendments? Oh, I'm sorry, we have to do these by roll call now, so. Voting on the amendments to this bill, the chair votes aye, Councilman Burnett. Councilman Burnett? Okay, well, well, we'll come back to Councilman Burnett. Second, Councilwoman McCray?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCray votes yes. Due to low bandwidth or local computer conditions, such as or RAM use, video is not current. There we go. We, we, looks like we've got Councilman Burnett back. Okay, and Councilman Burnett votes aye. So with three yeses, the amendments pass. And now I'm looking for a motion to move the bill favorably as amended. Councilwoman McCray, would you be able to make that motion?
Sure. Motion to move the bill.
Move the bill, Councilman Burnett. Do you second? Councilman Burnett, we can see you, but not hear you. I think you can stop sharing the screen now.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Burnett. Well, we'll do a roll call. Chair votes aye. Councilwoman, actually, Councilman Burnett?
Yes.
Councilman Burnett votes yes. Councilwoman McCray?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCray votes yes. With three yeses, the bill moves out of committee. And we will bring it out at the next council meeting on Monday, April 27. And now we move to our last bill of the day, which is City Council Bill 20-05, oh, nope. 19-0382, Charter Amendment, City Administrator. This bill was introduced by the council president, and so I turn it over to the council president for opening remarks.
Thank you, thank you. And let me first thank you and the committee for approving the last bill, the Charter Commission bill. I think this is something that will benefit the city of Baltimore, putting us aligned with cities around the country that consistently review their charters in, in a way that is outlined. And we'll also thank you all, despite Councilman Burnett's Teddy Riley technical difficulties on the internet, we were able to push the bill forward. This piece of legislation is also in that same vein, attempt to have Baltimore join most of the free world and most city governments across the country, and also county governments and in the state of Maryland. Actually, Casey, I sent to Casey an email something if she could share page nine of that link. I think it would be, I would greatly appreciate this. We are one of three jurisdictions in Maryland that, right now, don't separate the roles of the chief executive and the chief administrator, meaning that unlike the county executives, unlike the mayor of DC, there is nothing in law that requires the mayor or the county, or the mayor of Baltimore City, unlike those county executives or the mayors in other cities, to have a professional city administrator or county administrator who runs the day-to-day operations of city government. Many people, when we talk about this bill, think that what I am trying to do is to change us into a mayor, a council mayor, form of manager, form of government. No. We are still going to have a, a mayor form of government, but it's going to be a better one and one with more balance, and most importantly, more professional, more professionalism, more accountability, to allow us to have a efficient, efficient and effective city government. When you think about other places, for example, the closest city to us, Washington, large city to us, Washington DC, yes, the mayor of DC, Mayor Bowser, has a chief of staff, she has deputy mayors, all the things that we are accustomed to here in Baltimore City. However, there's also a professional city administrator who runs the day-to-day operations, someone that meets certain qualifications and practices. This is also the case around the region and around the state of Maryland. If you just look to our neighbors in Baltimore County, we know that County Executive Osheski has an administrative officer. Ironically, both the county administrative officer and the deputy county administrative officer came from Baltimore City, from DSS. And then, of course, we all know very intimately Drew Vetter, who was running the mayor's office in neighborhoods. This practice also exists in Allegheny and around the Calvert, Carroll, Cecil, Charles, Frederick, Garrett, Harford, Howard, Kent, Montgomery, Prince George's, Queen Anne, St. Mary's, Somerset, Toward, Washington, and Washington Counties, the only ones that don't have it, and Dorchester as well, are Baltimore City, Wycomico, and Worcester. That's it. We're the only ones. This is not about shaking, and we have amendments, and this bill is not going to be moved today, that we want to present to the committee and allow you guys to discuss in due time, that will essentially make this piece of legislation mirror what happens in DC, mirror what happens in the county and other other jurisdictions around the region and around the country, but that also adds in some of the things that I put into this bill that allows us to make sure that the person is meeting certain qualifications and practices, and that we are outlining this a little deeper than that. This bill is about making Baltimore have an efficient and effective government with the best 21st century practices that we have. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. We will now take agency reports from Law and Finance, starting with the Law Department. Mr. Terval?
Thank you. This is Victor from the City Law Department. Thank you for that explanation, President. I thought that was, that's, that's interesting. And I think, I want to preface my remarks by saying the Law Department would like to see a city administrator too. And in fact, as you pointed out, we probably, we attach staffs, deputy mayors who probably served in that position in the past, but we don't have anything in our charter that says that there is going to be a professional administrator. My comments are extensive. And at the end of the day, I suspect that perhaps your comments right there suggested you have amendments that'll get rid of some of my concerns on this particular bill.
Yep, can I, Mr. Chair, can I talk about that for a minute?
Sure.
Yeah, sorry about that. Sorry about that, sir. Yes, so I know, we know that you guys and Budget and some other folks were concerned about what it does. So we have amendments now that essentially would change this bill, again, to Mayor DC and Baltimore County, other places, to say that this person will be appointed by the mayor, meet these certain qualifications, work on these things with the mayor, and if the mayor doesn't be confirmed by, by the great folks of the city council, and if the person doesn't perform up the snuff, will be removed and fired by the mayor. So those are really what the crux of the amendments are. Just, we're making it mirror all the locations that have this city administrator, again, not going to a manager form of government, but have the city or county administrator practice in place right now.
Well, that sounds, that sounds great to me. Let me go through what it were to make sure that we've got them on, on, on record, at least. People have heard them. I guess the issue really, at the end of the day, is this particular bill. The, the major concern we had is that we keep the title of the mayor as the chief executive officer. But essentially, the bill as drafted eliminates his ability to reach down and actually manage the people who are responsible for actually the operations of government. That is given to the city administrator. And in all of the surrounding jurisdictions that have city administrators, I'm talking about the charter counties, not the code home rule counties or the commissioner counties, the ones that have elected executives that have, and they all have administrators on top of them, the elected executive is still a strong executive, even if they have a city administrator or a county administrator. And so the first contention that we pointed out was that, early on in this bill, it says the mayor is the, is responsible for carrying out the ordinances that are adopted by the city. But then it basically takes away his ability to manage the people who would carry out those ordinances. So that's a problem. We call the mayor the chief executive officer, but actually, without the ability to actually control or to direct the agencies, he or she would not be the chief executive officer. That would, once again, it would be the city, it would be the city administrator. We say that the mayor, in this bill, we say that the mayor can remove the city administrator, and actually, for no cause at all, just, just for any reason, but frankly, the, he can only be removed, he or she can only be removed when the city council agrees with it. So he really can't be, he or she really can't be removed by the, by the mayor, even if the mayor is unhappy with the city administrator, who he, he or she is supposed to be working with. He won't be able to get rid of that individual if somehow the city council disagrees with the removal. And then the idea that we have the removal for no cause at all, essentially at-will employee, that doesn't make sense either, because actually, it has to be the decision of the council that agrees with the mayor's movement. So it's really not an at-will employee at all. It's only when the council agrees to the removal. So that's, so that's a problem. And then finally, I was worried when I read this, because at some point, the city administrator can hire whoever he wants to hire. And given the power that is in this particular bill at this particular time, as drafted, as I'm saying, the city administrator has extensive power over everyday affairs. While the mayor's office today has 13 different offices, there is nothing except the ordinance, the annual ordinance of estimates, that would restrain the city administrator from hiring any staff and function in any, any way he, he or she would like to, to operate, which basically could duplicate all the functions that now we have under, under the mayor. Now, the fix on this would be very simple, on all of these, on all of these issues that we have. As long as the city administrator was actually responding, responding or answering to the mayor, then all of these things go away. And that is how it's done in all our surrounding counties. They're not getting independent. So that's really the substance of my, my conversation.
Mr. Chair, can I comment?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you, Victor. And I think that these were concerns that clearly that myself and my staff had as well, and that's why we have the amendments and we want to work with you, make sure that you have those. So that we, we want, we, in this case, you and I want the exact same thing from this legislation. So that's why we started to work on those amendments. And again, I asked my staff to make it mirror what happens in DC and Baltimore County. With, we, we do want to go a little deeper into what the requirements of the person being hired, hired have to meet. But outside of that, we are, we are lockstep with what you're saying.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we're going to Finance for their report. Daniel?
We are, we are supportive in concept with the idea of city administrator, the idea of creating a city administrator's office. We think that this is a very necessary part of running an enterprise of $3 billion, 14,000 staff. We share some of the concerns that the Law Department laid out, so I look forward to reading the amendments, and we will be able to respond after careful review.
Thank you. I also, I mentioned this in previous, in the hearing for the previous two bills about council composition. The GBC also submitted a position statement on the charter amendment for city administrator. They list 14 specific amendments that they are suggesting. That, as I've been going through them, of the 14, of the 14 that they listed, 13 of them appear to be consistent with the amendments that the council president described. And so I would expect to work with the council president's staff to integrate these with the ones you've already put together and make certain that uh, these with the ones you've already put together and make certain that all of them mesh, uh, properly. Um, I will point out that the GBC noted that on page two, line 19 through 21 of the actual Charter Amendment, uh, right now, there is a provision in Article One, Section Seven of the Charter, under records and reports, uh, that says, upon request of the mayor or Board of Estimates, every municipal agency shall promptly supply the mayor or the board with all requested information with respect to the practice and proceedings of the agency. Um, the Charter Amendment as written adds to that list of people who can request such information, both the city administrator and the city council. Uh, and the GBC takes issue with the fact that there is nothing in the purpose clause that, um, would explain why it's adding to the authority of the city council. Uh, I would expect that that would be part of the, um, what was expected in terms of the city council having some measure of, uh, control, uh, or some type of relationship with the city administrator, but I would ask the President, uh, publicly and firmly, do not take this out. I think that it's a great thing that it's in here, frankly, it was a surprise to me that it's not already somewhere in the charter that says that city agencies have to give us information when we ask. But, um, what I would ask, however, is, um, and I'm addressing this also to Mr. DeFranco from DLR, that we prepare as part of the amendments for this bill, one for the purpose clause, to make it clear that this is also, um, asking that we share that records and reports authority with the city council and leave Thank you.
Let me, yeah, you do, actually, earlier in the, in the charter, there is a provision that says you can call anybody you want up, uh, for, to, to a hearing, so you have authority to investigate, uh, you have an investigative committee, so you can get records, you can get records, and you can certainly, um, um, you know, have people come before you, uh, already. This is a little bit more specific, and I, I take your point, but we have something already in the charter that allows that.
That, that makes sense, um, I'm, but I'm, I'm happy to, I'm happy to have a, a belt to go with our suspenders.
Victor, can I? Yeah, Victor, just, just, and as a quick opinion, oh, do you see, I don't, I don't see a legal issue with that, and it's already in the charter, do you see an issue with this, with this point that they just raised?
No, I don't see it a legal issue.
Me neither, thank you.
Maybe, it may be, it may be a bill drafting thing, but it's not a, it's not, you know,
Thank you.
All right, thank you both, um, council, I'm looking to see, yeah, coun, Councilman Burnett and Councilwoman McRae, do either of you have questions for Law, Finance, or the Council President?
Uh, not at this time, but I, I will be, uh, following up.
Okay. Um, all right, are there any other, uh, questions or comments from any other participants on the call? Uh, I think we're gonna have to go back and look down our list of attendees again. Um, and we will be, uh, okay, so this is where I ask, uh, either Sam or Kalen to remind me, I know that with the call-in members, uh, we have to unmute them one at a time. If somebody is listed as an attendee, can they raise their hand?
That's correct, Mr. Chair, um, the only call-in person right now, I believe, is, uh, call-in number two.
Yeah.
User two, which is Rebecca Simmons, our general counsel.
Okay.
The, then you have a couple people from the public, uh, Dave, Mark, are two members from the public who, uh, may want to speak, to speak, you simply have to press the hand raise function in the bottom right corner of the screen, um, or if you, uh, have the list of names present next to you, uh, excuse me, next to your name, uh, you can also press the hand raise function there as well.
All right, so if there are anyone from the public who wishes to comment? Attendees can put stuff in the chat too, right? Right, so
That's correct, and they can also ask questions in the Q and A section as well.
Okay, so if you're having trouble raising your hand, uh, please say so in the chat or the Q and A, otherwise, I'm gonna move on from this and say that we don't have any public testimony at this point, so we will, uh, table this bill while the President's Office, uh, works out, uh, the remainder of the amendments, and we will hold, uh, workshops subsequently to, uh, gather additional public input and, uh, and, and we can even entertain a vote on the amendments at that time. Uh, is, are there any other comments from members of the committee or other participants in this hearing?
Just a thank you, thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. President. If not, then I'm gonna say that, uh, this hearing is, uh, concluded, and we will, uh, be, uh, announcing subsequent hearings and work sessions at next Monday's council meeting. Thank you all for participating, and stay safe.